Uh good evening. Uh this is the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Newcastle's only Board of Appeals. Uh we'll get started. We have an extension tonight.
Uh Jen.
You have any?
I'm here.
Yeah.
Which one is Jen?
I'm Jane Jen.
Hi, I'm Robert Jen.
And I'm.
And I'm.
They were presented. Okay. Can you tell us about your request for an extension and give us some information on that? Yeah, so uh we presented the current owners to Jen as a matter of for the former owners Paul and Havel and Fishman. For the granted uh there was a sale on February twenty fifth of twenty five. The Fishman who granted the variance to construct the single family residence on the reference lot on September twenty fifth of two thousand twenty four. Uh the planning board determined the lot substantially conformed to the zoning requirements except for two percent shortage on the area. Uh it was determined that this was directed by a perceived error in the original subdivision. The variance was granted and it was given in six months the complete um construction. It started in the end. And we're requesting in the middle of six months um we've had substantial progress since the closing date. We have key permits and we have sewer, road, tree permits. We also obtained the bar approval and we're only waiting on the septic approval from the board to help. Everything else has been cleared. We're just waiting on the board to help out that. Uh it's been no no delay on our part. We're just adding the receipt for that. Okay. I know our building department is uh is in agreement with that. You guys have been working hard trying to get these this paperwork finished. Uh it's understandable. Um I think anyone anybody on the board want any input on this one? No, okay. Alright, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the extension uh for another six months to start and a year to finish after that.
I have a second motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You have your extension? Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Next up is uh next up is Pines Bridge Realty. Let's see.
Good evening, everybody. We're back. Hope this thing is on.
Doesn't sound like it. Doesn't sound like it, does it?
Doesn't sound like it.
There's a button on the side I think you need to activate. Somewhere.
Hello?
No, no.
We need to speak with him.
Any one of our tech boys can just go on.
I think he just came on.
Yeah.
Hello?
Oh, okay, we got one. She walked in the room.
Give you the exercise.
You got the magic touch, then you got the touching at the first place.
I'm very good mechanically, but the electronic, I don't know. This is just pure luck.
Alright, can you tell us your name and this?
Um William Mesherat. I'm representing the owners. Actually, the owner is here with me today. And um we have gone last time we kinda missed the the to the deck that needed a variance. And we added it to the application and we re- renotified the neighborhood. Now, there's a new development just came up and I was discussing it. The owner's son is gonna be moving in this house and he's a single man and he's happy with the tiny little kitchen that's in there. But when the discussion came and they're gonna be potential marriage and kids soon, they're gonna need a bigger kitchen in the house. So we would like to expand the kitchen and make it larger. And I understand that needs to be re-renovation and change of plans and re uh uh denial to come to the board. So we would like to ask the board if they can give do us a favor and postpone us till the next month and we will go through the procedure of changing the application again. And doing it is I don't know how the board would feel about it.
No, we're 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 okay.
Yeah. It's like a tiny little kitchen that's eleven foot wide. It's like for a single person is beautiful, but you
So you're gonna be pushing it out and you'll need
I wanna push it out where the deck is and we'll propose it.
You'll need more of a variance.
Okay, we're gonna make it into an enclosure and make the kitchen and the dining room bigger big open space. It was, you know, it 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 like make it functional.
Okay.
Alright.
We'll we'll look at that. And we'll send you next one.
You are. With yeah, next
Um I'm just
With the revised everything.
I'm assuming we both revise plans, you know.
Revised plans, revised site survey, everything.
So does does that have Mike, does that have to be re-noticed again?
Yes.
Or you're gonna have to do the whole the whole notice and everything?
Yeah, we 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 are aware of that. We'll take care of it, okay?
Okay. We'll see you next month.
Thank you for your time and sorry you waited so long.
Not a waste. Thanks for coming.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, next up next up is Juan Chiki.
Good evening. My name is David Arango. I am working for Mrs. Claudia Mullis. We represent the Mrs. Attila Mania for the forty sixth place. Um it the project consists in a conditional garage next to the house in the right size. And um uh the uh according with the architect and the owner, they made some alterations. They reduced the size a little bit for the garage and they requesting a side variance for the three feet. And also the in the previous meeting of the board, they request, you know, like I have a uh removal uh tree permit that is submitted and approved. And also now the architect and the owner provide a new screen next to the neighbor in the right size. Six trees there for his defense in that size. And uh the reduction of the garage reduce a little bit the cover area and all that things. All the plans was submitted to the town with the new calculations for the request.
So the so the new
Yes.
New building coverage of variance request is for twenty-two square feet?
Yes.
Okay, not what it used to be. I think we can change that. It's reducing it. I don't think we need to do anything uh like re-notice or anything like that. It changes the variance, but it changes it to uh uh less of a variance.
Reducing it to less of a variance.
So we should be okay. Is that a planting? I see you have you have a lot of other plantings.
Yes, we Yes, everything that is in the in the new drawings will be submitted.
Fill me in, Jackie. Last month, did we approve this or we had we were holding it off? We didn't know what it was for.
We first approved, we left the public here in the open and they were able to come back after submitting the planting plan.
Okay. So anybody on the board have any comments about the new uh proposals? Anybody in the audience or online that have any comments about the proposal?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Yeah.
Nobody online?
What's your line?
Okay, we have one here.
So um
Can you s- tell us your name and uh where where you live and what your uh your comments are?
Yes. Greg. Yes, Greg Gonzalez, thirty-eight Saint John's Place. We're neighbors. Um I was here last month and and talked along with my wife and another neighbor. I just wanna verify how much it's being reduced from the previous plan.
Oh.
It's the co- the coverage variance that they're asking for is going it's dropping from ninety square feet down to a twenty-two square feet variance on just the building coverage itself.
Yeah, this I didn't you want the size.
Yes.
The size of the in the front is twenty feet to inches.
Yeah.
Change. Before was thirty-two um change, now is twenty-eight.
Okay, so from thirty-two to twenty-eight, twenty-two twenty twenty.
Is it twenty-two foot feet?
No, twenty was thirty-two to twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, which means it's twenty-two square feet.
Four four feet.
Yes.
Okay. Um just a couple of observations that I I know we went through this before, but something to just consider and just just wanna say my peace of mind. Um regarding like, you know, we had obviously our neighbor had an issue with the driveways kind of being close to each other, back to back. Uh there's also another driveway there that's that's owned by the church. It's an an entry and an exit. That's also extremely close. It's only maybe three feet from across the street as well. So you've got three driveways. One with a decent amount of traffic several several days a week. Just as a as a question of whether or not that that can be an issue, safety issue, et cetera. The other thing I would say is, you know, I I'm happy that it's being reduced in size 'cause my my beef was that it it just seemed like it was too big of a structure for the property and and where we were uh located. Um you know, obviously, you know, you you guys have to do what you do. Um but I would say, you know, in keeping with the the neighborhood, my ideal compromise would be to go down to a one-car garage. If that can't be done, I know we talked about they also wanted a variance for their shed. Would it be possible then to, if they're gonna have a two-car garage, to have them not have the variance for the shed so that we're not just looking at all these structures across from our property? 'Cause I just think that we still have a pretty decent amount of of encroachment. It's just something I wanted to say and um and I know um you know regarding plantings, um I know that that was also something that was brought up that, you know, they would they would try to take trees down and then plant a decent amount of coverage. I would just also hope that 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 that's a substantial plan that we could at least uh go over right now. At least you have those details on that. Ideally, would like to see, you know, a pretty uh robust planting plan so that we're not just looking at these all the structures across uh from our mess and through our windows. That's it. Thank you.
The applicant has has submitted a planting plan. Which shows the type of trees and the locations, which is what we normally require. So
Is that is that depicted on the um on the plan?
I don't know.
You can probably share the screen too if it makes it easier.
So it's gonna go all the way up to where our fence is?
Yes.
So this has been reduced now to the point where there didn't even need a bit, sorry.
Can you can you um just well let say your name for the record?
Kathy Gonzalez, um next door neighbor.
Okay.
Um so this now is at the reduced to the point where she doesn't even need a variance. Is that what we're saying? They're not they're
Because she needs to know it's normalized variance.
Okay, come in. And again, I'm just confused as to what exactly I just feel like there've been so many different numbers.
Drop fifty seven.
Look like interest.
Ninety.
From the side, they needed three feet.
Yes.
Right. Wasn't that what exa- what was being asked for originally?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
That's just for the uh side yard variance?
Yes.
But the project itself has a building coverage variance.
Yes.
Last time, the building coverage variance that was requested was about, I think it was ninety-eight square feet, went down to twenty-two square feet. So I I don't know where that's coming from necessarily.
I I would just excuse I would just recommend that that, you know, uh questions about the details of the of the plan be based on the representations of the applicants and the and the documents that are submitted. I don't want anybody relying on, you know, on on
Yeah.
on statements uh by any board members about what the the nature of the of the uh the revisions are.
Yes.
Sure. So if you could just show us, tell us exactly what
The garage was thirty-two feet longer. But they reduced the size at twenty-eight. You know, that is the amount of the covered area they reduced. That is the square footage we take out from the thing.
Oh, so you reduced it from the behind from but not the side variance is what we're saying?
Yeah. It yeah, it's the same. We still the same width, but the length is reduced.
Okay, okay. So, okay, which we appreciate that because we felt also the size of the garage is way too big. I I don't know if anybody knows our neighborhood and how close our houses are, but our houses are very close to each other. This this puts them within feet of our house. And it just feels like a big encroachment upon da- upon us. Um so we appreciate the reduction in that. We still we just how close it's coming to our house, it's 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 upsetting to us just because we do have windows that look out at that it will be looking right at that structure encroaching upon us. And it's just it's gonna make it dark. It's gonna make it just it's not 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 it's it's not gonna benefit us in any way. Um So uh you know, again, it just feels like this is a situation of the nice guy finishes last where, you know, we've been nothing but amazing neighbors. We have, you know, we have always been courteous, tolerant, patient and always had her back for everything. And that, you know, there's never been anything in return in terms of a thank you, in terms of any compromise. And we would have just loved to have seen more of a compromise here that could could benefit everybody. Um I understand if this is it has to be what it is. We're just hoping that um, you know, it aesthetically you know, will will, you know, um you know, satisfy us. And we're not ha- we're not a hundred percent happy about any of this, but um, you know, this is what it is. We just hope that we see not we would prefer also if this is gonna happen and this stays so close to our house. The trees go along. We've built this fence. This is our fence. The neighbors have all built the fences around um her property because they we've needed coverage from them. Um if trees could be planted along the fence here too, so that we're not looking at this overpowering structure on top of us. Our house is small. Um to have this, you know, looming over us, we just it's just not aesthetically pleasing and it's just encro- it just feels very tight to us.
So would would the would the applicant be agreeable to extending that tree line?
I can recall.
Beyond beyond the new, we understand the new structure is being shaded or uh you know shielded from the uh from the property with those trees.
Yeah.
The existing structure is is there. It's it's just the way it is. But I understand what the what the neighbors are concerned about and would the applicant be I mean amenable to extending that tree line to well, like instead of back in the uh existing structure.
To the back of the garage because we we look when this is right in our yard.
Yeah, yeah, I think that
I I think we can I can talk to the owner and maybe as a good uh uh comment. I know I think I have a problem.
I think that would be a fair compromise. Yeah. Yeah, I I I think if the neighbors got together and made that a fair compromise, uh we
Yeah, no, no, I think it's a it's a
We'd be the help to the board making that decision.
I think so. We talked with the owner and we suggest.
Yes. Yeah, why don't you do that and and come back one more time, I'm sorry to say, with a with a revised
Sorry, I'm I'm excuse me, I'm actually here. I'm amenable to more trees up.
Okay, so but we'll need a revised planting plan to show
Can I just ask one question? Uh 'cause I can't. I apologize for not being there. Um Can I just ask one question? I 'cause I can't. I apologize for not being there. Um What do you I'm not sure exactly where you want the trees on the on along the fence?
I'm not sure exactly where you want the trees on the on along the fence.
Yeah, so that like these are not all these can be where they are, but then trees along the fence so that we are blocked from looking at this structure.
Yes.
If you shield it, yeah.
So so can I just say there is a massive pine tree that will that's on your side, Kathy, that blocks So so can I just say there is a massive pine tree that will that's on your side, Kathy, that blocks probably the entire garage.
Probably the entire garage. Not really. You're taking down, you told me that you were taking down those branches on that. You have to take down those branches, you said, on that side.
Yeah, well, I would take some branch. I'm not taking a lot of branches down our trees. So I would only take down the branches that Well, I have to take some branch. I'm not taking a lot of branches down our trees. So I would only take down the branches that but it's only on one side. Your branches will all still remain on your side, thereby there will still be coverage. but it's only on one side. Your branches will all still remain on your side, thereby there will still be coverage.
It's really not that way. It's that's not it. We see you through those 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 if you're doing those green giants, we would prefer that the green giants continue through so that we, if it's possible, if it's possible to plant on your side.
Yeah, that's the one thing is I mean the only thing I will say is, you know, talking to Dennis, and Dennis has been at the house, the environmental coordinator many times, I mean the only thing I will say is, you know, talking to Dennis, and Dennis has been at the house, the environmental coordinator many times, is I if I if we plant and I'm amenable to planting if I if we plant and I'm amenable to planting that section because your fence is right there has zero sun. has zero sun. So they will not, you know, continue to to grow, honestly. Um and I've seen that on some of the other plantings I've done, uh where I've gotten very little shade. And I've seen that on some of the other plantings I've done, uh where I've gotten very little shade.
But I feel like on your other side that you have doesn't get any sun either. And you have your green giants down all along your shade your shady yard on the other side.
Which have died. Which have died.
No, those are the back No, those are the ones at the back, but the ones on the side are with the on the other name on um
Correct, correct, because there's no fence in front of it. But what you're proposing is your fence
Correct, correct.
But what you're proposing is your fence right behind the fence. So between your fence and the garage to put green giants, which again right behind the fence. So between your fence and the garage to put green giants, which again fundamentally, I don't have any problem with that, but they will not survive. I have two in the back that didn't have enough fundamentally, I don't have any problem with that, but they will not survive. I have two in the back that didn't have enough
But there is a fence on the obby side. There's a fence.
Didn't Right, but that's the that's the um that's the south side. Right, but that's the that's the um that's the south side. Zero sun. No, they I'm sorry, they don't have a fence there. They don't have a fence.
No, they have sorry, they don't have a fence there. They don't have a fence.
The the where my the where the green giants are in the front there, there's no fence. The the where my the where the green giants are in the front there, there's no fence. And then the only fence that is was put in, I put in that fence And then the only fence that is was put in, I put in that fence after the u's have been up for like thirty years. So those u's because they're already bold and they're already mature, after the u's have been up for like thirty years. So those u's because they're already bold and they're already mature, they were able to survive. So those are those are surviving perfectly fine. But it's it's be they were able to survive. So those are those are surviving perfectly fine. But it's it's be this you know, there's a what it's gonna be eight feet to plant something between eight feet. I that's you know, there's a what it's gonna be eight feet to plant something between eight feet. I that's I mean, I'm amenable. I'll come back again, but I'll I can
I I'm amenable. I'll come back again, but I I can
Yeah, we can ask Dennis.
Yeah.
Here's here's what we're gonna do. We're not we're not gonna banter back and forth. Here's one of the
There's a ton.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
The applicant is gonna check with their landscaper and verify whether or not these trees will survive or not. And I would suggest that the two neighbors get together and explain the situation, come to some kind of a compromise, revise the planting plan, come back and see us in June, and we'll ultimately make a decision by then.
We not can get in like a conditional approval, you know?
No, you can't do that. No, no. We need we need to have the planting plan uh written in stone. And uh you know, if you your if your landscaper says it can't be done, we'll put that in the record as well. But I think that it we need to have is put down uh in in some firm manner so that when we do make our decision, uh it's it's a proper decision.
Okay.
So we will see you all again next month.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Klein.
Uh good evening. I am Philip Pollard, uh from State of Architecture, um Andrew and Melissa Klein at twenty-nine Ludlow, uh for their who are seeking a variance uh for an addition to their house. We are looking to construct a building in the side yard setback uh that is essentially as the architecture will look, have a sunroom uh with a second story half-story above which will have a master bathroom. Um we are seeking a a variance of eight feet. Um this reduces setback to twenty-six feet.
Nine feet. Yeah, nine feet around on those paperwork.
Five feet, sorry.
Probably eight point something and we like the round note so that there's no pressure later on.
Right, yes.
We're looking for nine feet.
Yes, nine feet.
Okay.
Correct, yes. Um and uh the reason we are looking to go in this direction, um there is basically a lot of space on this side of the house. Currently, the existing house is non-conforming. The garage, it has two sixty-foot front yard setbacks as it's a corner lot. Uh the garage encroaches on the McClellan Place setback. Um also the house just being uh is encroaches a little bit on the Ludlow Drive and then the hill receives back. So we we have an existing living room on this side of the house and would like to expand from that living room uh into a um a media room and a home office that will be in this in this setback. Even with this, the foundation will be a little bit tricky because this the hill does uh receive back. Um and so we would have to to want to almost create a little foundation. Um but we also feel that this addition adds uh to the character of the home. This currently uh this house um is just uh has quite a small street frontage. Um and the owner feels feel that it would be beneficial to um and in in line with the character of the neighborhood, um to increase the square foot in in increase the the frontage of the home into this um setback. There's currently about forty forty feet in that setback. Um so it's, I mean, I'll use term dead space, but it's um it's sort of off to the side of the house. There is an existing um neighboring fence and uh trees and and landscape buffer. Um the uh the landscaping that area further once construction is finished. Uh but the net um the from my understanding, uh the owner has spoken to the neighbors and they are in general uh um approval of the project. On this um one is here, but um so uh happy to answer any questions if you have it.
This is great. Had you put the addition on the other side of the house? Which I don't even know if it's even on. I guess you couldn't have done it with your garage there.
It Correct, it it has a garage and then it it going and we are already going a little bit backwards. A little bit receding um back into the lot, but as I mentioned, um there's a there's a patio and it it also um this um we feel like this is sort of the best best location for uh we're dealing with some of the complexities of the side.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments for the board? Anybody in the audience or online that would like to comment on this application?
No kids are raised on the
Everybody online. In that case, I will move that you can vote here.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion that the uh application of Andrew and Melissa Klein for a uh nine-foot side yard variance. Wanted to uh put an addition on to their house that comes to an addition with dormers. Uh be approved for the following reasons. Uh the granting of the variance will not create a desirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There is no other means feasible means to achieve the desired end of the variance. In this particular instance, this is not a substantial variance. It will be no adverse effect on the physical environment conditions of the neighborhood. This is a legally existing non-conforming structure. Uh therefore, I would not consider this a self-created hardship here. There's nothing they can do with this house other than get variances because of this situation. And if you could provide for the foundation survey prior to framing, you will have six months to start and one year to finish.
Thank you.
We're not finished yet. Give me a sec. Are you allowed to let me for?
Not now, just
You're not gonna want to second my motion?
Oh, sorry. Did you make a motion? I'm sorry, I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You have your variance.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, Ali Gremaldi, next.
Good evening. I'm Mary Scott. Mark Leib and Christine Grimaldi, homeowners, are here as well. Um so there are two parts to our request tonight. One is a request to enclose a front yard porch in order to make it um part of the living space. And this is an existing porch from this house from the early nineteen twenties. Um and architecturally, we're keeping in the same feeling with the windows and and the divisions with the columns. Um but because this house is close to the road, it needs a front yard. Um so um so I just wanted you to be able to see.
Mary, can you better bring the mic with you? I'm viewing the audience by one ear.
Um just to make it clear kind of what what's back there. So it's a it's a very private yard. It's on the end of the cul-de-sac. Um and is surrounded by bushes and uh trees. So in terms of um disturbing the neighborhood, it really doesn't have any impact. I can't even really see it from the street. So in terms of um the coverage, the other thing I wanted to point out was, you know, we kind of looked at areas that we could possibly cut back. Um and one being here that is gravel and a few stone slates, you know, which would be easy enough to change. Um the other thing we looked at was taking some of the gravel driveway, but the fact is it's a narrow um driveway as it is, goes up a hill. And in order to get out of the garage, you've gotta back up and go front ways. I mean, it's kind of a killer driveway. Um the other thing is, when you look at the survey, it looks like there are these paths that go around the back of the garage. In fact, they're separate stones. Show this with you guys too, um. You know, they're like individual paving stones that have moss in between them, so it's not like it's a lot of concrete.
Okay.
So.
So how long has the patio been there?
Now, uh what have you taken years?
Uh fifteen. Oh. Oh, a long time.
And so how did it get to be built without a permit, is my next question. Maybe you should come up.
Stupidity, I don't know.
I'm deferring that one.
Did you build it to, come on up. Did you build the patio or did people before you build the patio?
No, we built the patio, I mean, I didn't build it with my own hand.
No, I understand, I understand, and and the uh the reason it wasn't permitted was?
Really just stupidity, we were just, we had just done a lot of, you know, renovations, we had focused on the house. We really didn't have a landscaping plan. We didn't, we had lawn in that area. And it got muddy and uh landscaper, we had a landscaper put in some dry laid stone and it just, at the time, it didn't seem like it.
Wasn't malicious intent there?
No, it wasn't, it just seemed like a minor.
Might you get in the record that that it was not something done maliciously?
Oh, no, I hope, no, we had no malicious intent.
Appreciate your input.
Okay. Give the mic.
Anybody on the board, more comments?
I just have one question, um Mary, the the just for purposes of deciding on this, the uh uh enclosed in the covered existing porch, is that that space is, they need that additional space for?
You know, it's it's kind of unused as a porch, it gets buggy, um you know, dirty, whatever, and they just felt that if it was enclosed,
Right.
be a place you can sit in the winter and and kind of make use of it as opposed to.
Wonderful.
Gosh, that is.
Thank you. Is that microphone working? It doesn't seem to be. Okay.
It's it's hard, yeah, I feel the same way, but I know it's on.
It's on, okay.
Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to uh speak to this application?
No hands raised online?
No hands raised online, nobody in the audience, okay. No more questions from the board, in that case, I will move that we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
Um I make a motion um uh regarding uh Mark Lieb um Mark Gremaldi and Lieb uh at forty-one Crest Road, um that we um grant a variance um for um let's see, um front yard variance of twenty-six feet for um enclosing a porch that's currently existing. Um this is a existing non-conforming property. Um in addition to the um front yard setback, we're also re they're requesting a eleven uh square foot of F A R floor area ratio variance as well as a which is.
Actually, it's not eleven.
Yeah, that actually got revised.
It's seven hundred and twenty-six, it was.
Oh, okay, seven twenty-six. So the requested variance is seven twenty-six? That's quite a difference, um. Uh the uh the requested variance F A R is seven hundred and twenty-six feet, uh and that is reflecting the enclosing porch. Uh then the side yard patio uh variance, this is a a development coverage variance. And the requested uh variance is seven hundred and seventy-six point six oh five, which I assume would make it seven seven seven. Um uh two, um this is an existing um non-legal development patio that was put in place um ten to fifteen years ago. Um and the enclosed porch um rationale is that they're gonna be, they would like to use this area in the winter as opposed to just the summer. Uh therefore, um the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood uh or detriment to nearby parties. Uh the benefits offered by the applicants really cannot be achieved by another method since the porch is already there and they're just enclosing it. Of course, the patio uh is there and has been there illegally. Uh the requested variance is are somewhat substantial, um but it really doesn't have a feasible way to do this. Um it will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Uh there are no neighbors present um who have written or have written in opposition to the variance. Um it is, the variance of the enclosed porch is is not a self-created hardship in the fact that it is existing non-conforming. Uh the variance for the um patio is in fact a self-created hardship. Um but it does improve the quality of life, they mentioned that their lawn was wet back there and so this keeps it probably more usable for the family. Uh therefore, um I move grant a variance um with, I guess, six months to start and a year to finish, and what do we need, Tom?
Final survey, please.
Uh and a final survey.
You you talk about survey on the uh patio area?
Correct, where they're showing the removals that they've they removed.
They have to take a permit.
Well, we we got the variance, well, any removal?
So you're you're proposing not to take away that hundred and twenty-five square feet?
Right, I mean, what they've said is they would grant us the variance for the um seven hundred and.
All right, then I would take an as-built from you, Mary, the architect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
As-built survey. Okay, then we're pressing as-built survey, in that case.
Okay.
Okay, six months to start. I forgot that part, six months to start and one year to finish.
We take it, so where was I, where was I? I'll second that motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You have your variances, good luck with them.
Thank you.
Okay, uh Kavanaugh?
Hello, my name is Chu Hee Lee Parker, I'm with Architects, representing my clients, um Kim, um I'm sorry, Anna Kim and Brandon Kavanaugh. And um Dee from our studio is uh presenting our drawing on the screen. And um the location is um one one eight one Hart Scrabble Road. And um it is a a small house in existing non-conforming lot. Um we are proposing to renovate um and add on, add a, uh I'm sorry, expand the second floor uh a little bit by a couple hundred square feet, uh using the same footprint. The um only small change in the footprint is that's that little square-ish uh corner uh by the stair. Um currently, the house has a um uh circular stair and it's not safe, um they have a young child. And we would like to do a just a straight run and in order, because the house is so small, um just filling that corner will make it um make it work. Um and the other item that the building inspector um uh flagged is the uh cantilevered balcony slash window seat below, which doesn't have a footing. Um um and so that is uh second item that we're here for. And then the third item is the uh new stone terrace uh towards the back of the house. Um and I guess uh if we were to zoom out a little bit deep, uh the location is that the Hart Scrabble Road is on the left of us and the northern way is south of us. Um and it's a it's a very small lot and our client, uh when the real estate listing was just just a little tiny bit over a thousand square feet. And they are proposing um approx approximately one thousand three hundred and change, um just under uh one thousand four hundred square feet of livable space. Um so we are trying to do um as best as we can, what also in our effort, um by filling that square, uh we're also trying to make it architecturally cohesive, because right now the additions are very haphazardly added on. And so we would like to um make an architectural improvement and Dee, maybe we can go to the proposed um renderings for that. And so that is the um south southwest corner and that's uh addition of uh renovated addition on the existing footprint with exception of the corner that's being filled where that window is. And then we can sh- uh show the other with rendering. Um uh um uh that's the backside of the house, uh where the uh the dark uh portion is the um in a little bit of an increased footprint on the second floor. Upper level, I should say. And then in terms of height, um we're conforming, it's just that those little spots to make the house a little more livable.
So your second story addition means the the code for height, you know, I've seen this.
Yes, correct. And we're staying within the existing footprint except for that little corner where we need it for the stair landing.
Looks like a nice job to me.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody have any comments on this one? No, any questions, comments?
No.
Anybody in the audience are online that would like to uh speak to this application?
No hands are raised online?
No hands online, we're going here. Okay, this is
Thank you.
straightforward. We'll move that we uh close the public hearing.
I second that motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion that the application of uh Brandon Kavanaugh and Anna Kim.
Anna Kim?
Anna Kim, yeah.
And Brandon Kavanaugh.
Okay, did I say it right?
Anna Kim.
Okay. Thank you. Um I'm gonna move that we approve this application for um a second story addition requiring thirty-seven foot variance. Rear yard setback, um variance requiring twenty-four feet. Uh second story balcony variance of twenty-three feet, rear yard setback variance of twenty-two feet. And front yard setback of Edwarden Way for twenty feet. And for this is for the stone patio, the twenty feet of the rear yard, various of four feet also for the patio. I'll make a motion that we approve those requested variances uh for the following reasons. This is a really old small, I know this place, this is a really old small house that looks more like a garage right now than anything else. And it it is on an undersized lot, it's legally existing non-conforming and it drastically needs help. I mean, you're here to help and we appreciate that, we think it'll move better.
Thanks.
So the granting of these variances uh will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Uh there is no other method other than creating other variance to achieve the desired end and make this house really livable. Uh there will be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. I would I would not consider this self-created because, uh as we said before, it's it's an undersized lot, it's legally existing non-conforming. Nothing can be done to this house without requesting variances. And do we do we get surveys on uh the little bit of foundation that could be putting in, or?
Yes, please, there is the stone patio in the back.
You want finals or or prior to?
Uh the final would be final.
Well, okay, so we'll we'll do a final survey after all construction work is done. Uh you'll have six months to start and one year to finish.
Agreed.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You have your variances, good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh Lupinachi?
Good evening, I'm May, just like to uh make it easier than versus uh looking at the easel. Uh I have a presentation that I'm willing to take you through. Thank you for your time and consideration, uh I'm John Lupinachi, I live on nineteen Peck Road. Um my wife and I uh moved here, well, we bought our house in uh two thousand twenty-two. Uh we did a major renovation. Working easels, harder than that, look. So um bought the house, we did a major renovation, we have five children, uh three living in New York City, uh two with us here, and we are looking to build a pool. Um and we'll need a side variance, a rear variance, and a development uh coverage uh variance. Uh the next couple pages, we really is just a good faith showing of what my wife and I have done over the project and what we plan to do for the pool also. We do not have a landscape plan, uh but this is a good faith showing and of what we've done over the phases um of the landscaping for the house and what we plan to do um for the pool. Um our desire is to bring the five kids home on the weekends, so we'd like to build a pool in our uh backyard.
You're not bringing them home permanently, are you?
My wife would like that, but she's not on my.
Okay.
So what we would like to uh what we'd like to do is build a pool, the pool conforms to all of the setbacks, but it's the patio that is uh requiring um our variance. Um we would need a, uh the setback to the rear is fifty feet, we would need a a six-foot uh variance, uh we would keep forty-four. The side uh variance is thirty-five feet, um we need a variance of twelve feet. And the coverage, um it's uh the the allowed coverage is eight thousand uh seven hundred and forty-two square feet. We are looking for ten percent or eight hundred and forty-six.
Eight eighty-four.
Sorry, eight eighty-four or or approximately ten percent, yes, you are correct, sir. That's the pool, don't need to show that. Um just wanted to try to illustrate, I don't know if you came to the property or not, just a a rough uh illustration of where we would put the pool and how it would uh sit on the uh on the property uh within the landscaping. Uh we will be building a sitting wall, like a uh a one-foot-high sitting wall all around the pool to match with the uh existing um wall. Um and again, if you look at the criterias of the area variance, as you're all aware, um we do not believe it will create an undesirable change to the ne- neighborhood. Currently, there's three houses in our neighborhood that have um houses, if you look at the last the last two pages of uh of that presentation I gave you, um this will be the fourth fourth pool in the neighborhood and three um on adjoining properties. Nineteen Peck Road, I believe it's uh twenty-one, and then nine Peck Road after the turn. Uh and there's one on Court Mel, uh which uh and is the route enter the neighborhood. Um we did try to look at and reorient to see if there's another way of of doing this. Um first off, we would absolutely need a development coverage uh variance, so we would be uh here. Um we tried to reorientate it around the property, um but if I could go back to this one here. If we did, we would bring it closer to the driveway and then it would force the mechanicals and our existing um uh uh generator, we would have to push that behind the pool, still conform within the the fifty and thirty-five setback. We'd rather not move the mechanicals and the generator closer to our neighbors, we'd rather keep them uh closer to the house where they were originally designed. Um so again, reorienting the pool is kind of difficult to reduce the side or it would reduce the the rear, but it would may not reduce the uh the 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 side. Um again, if you look at the are they substantial, um that's gonna be your balance test, obviously. You know, six foot on fifty, you know, about twelve percent, not that substantial in my. You know, six foot on fifty, you know, about twelve percent, not that substantial in my opinion, um with all respect. Uh and you know, twelve foot, it's about a third. If you look at it, overall, you could say, yes, that is a substantial, about a third of the uh thing. But as you are aware with the variances, each variance is unique. And this uniqueness, especially for this one here, is the next page here. If you look at the side, um you know, here. The property line is on the end, on the other side, right now, on the left side of these trees. We have natural trees all around the the green, green giant. And so it would be from here to there is the twenty-one uh feet that would exist. And then right here between our neighbors, it is our neighbor's property, but they have a pool, as I said, adj- adjacent. They have a pool and they have a pool fence. This land right here, right now, is not currently utilized. In fact, the previous owners of nineteen Peck Road and myself, the new owners, we cut that grass, if you look at it, so that it looks aesthetic because the neighbors do not have to come across. The current neighbor is, they rent. Um we did send the notification to the um to the obviously property owner. So that's the uniqueness, yes, we were asking for a twelve foot variance. But you know, if they ever move their pool fence, because they have a pool, they would have, you know, some type of screenage. And we have um thirty green giant um ever um ro- um evergreens that are growing to block of that. So we think that's a a uniqueness for that.
Before you go, there was a question.
Yes, sir.
That that yellow rectangle.
Yes, sir.
Is that your property or the neighbor's property?
So right here is my property, on this side, it's the neighbor's property. And that's where I say you could see like my landscaper cuts it because it would just, it would just keep growing high. So this is where I'm saying it's the uniqueness. Yes, I'm coming, you know, twelve feet closer than, and that's where I need the setback. But there's twenty-one feet, if you look at the survey, there's twenty-one feet right here. That also is a, I'll call a natural buffer, um but it is the neighbor's property. And then the last page, as you can see, is really just illustrating that there are other pools, um you know, in the neighborhood, uh you know, standing right by side. So that is uh, you know, really what we would like to uh like to do.
And I had two questions in my mind.
Yes, sir.
One of them you already answered about the mechanicals, why you can't, why you can't move the pool forward.
Yeah, we could, sir, we just, we would prefer not to.
No, I am, no, I I agree with you on that. The other question I had was on the side yard, what's preventing you from moving everything away from that?
So, so I I couldn't move the pool because of the setback, uh the Westchester Board of Health setback uh from the first septic leg. I could, I could move this over here. What we've tried to avoid is that from the, from the porch, um the the rear porch, is that we could actually see a lot of the pool as opposed to people's back. That if there's any grandkids swimming or anything, we'd like a direct line of sight as opposed to putting like, say, a picnic table or chairs there. That's the only um, you know, reason why ideally we would like to 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 put it on on that side.
No, I I know, I know you're septicing there, I saw that. And um the reason I asked that question was to get it in the record.
Sure, yes, thank you.
You're stuck because of the water health and they're, they're very tough on yourself. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board, anybody have a comment?
I would just say that's a a excellent presentation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I I sat up there for seven years at the town of Carmel. It's a lot easier up there than you know. So that's why I say I thank you for your time and consideration.
Is there anybody online or in the room that would like to address this application?
No hands raised online.
No hands online, anybody here? No. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazans.
Hi.
Okay. You all can wanna do it?
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh in regards to the application of, I guess, I'll say Lupinachi in Burtonfield.
Yes, my wife, Burtonfield, yes.
At nineteen Peck Road, um this application uh is for a pool and patio. Where they are, the applicants are looking to put in a pool and a patio. Which would is um being put in for their family, for the grandkids, um having their, they have five children. I think three of them live in the city, I think you said.
Yes.
Um the um, the request is made for a number of reasons. One of the reasons being they don't wanna move the um, the um generator that they have and the associated machinery uh because they feel it would uh influence the neighbors' view shed or noise, uh which is understandable. They are requesting a um six foot rear yard setback. In in addition, they are asking for a twelve foot side yard setback and a development coverage variance of eight hundred and eighty-four square feet, which is about ten percent. For the following reasons, the granting of this variance will not create uh an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby parts, properties. The benefits sought by applicants, uh it seems cannot be achieved by any other method, seeing as the pool cannot be uh put in a different place due to septic fields. In addition, they would like a pool in a particular area of the of the back property for safety reasons for the grandkids, which is understandable. The requested variances are somewhat substantial. Uh but again, there is no feasible location for this pool and associated patio. Uh it will not have an adverse effect on the uh impact of the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. In fact, there are, I think, three other pools right adjacent nearby. There are no neighbors who are present who have written in opposition to the variance. Uh it is a self-created hardship, um in that you don't need a pool, but I believe that the benefits uh to this um property of adding a pool will greatly outweigh the um, the self-created hardship. I would, I believe that our uh chairman would like to have a, the pool be a gun eye pool.
Oh, it is um, it is a fiberglass, um one of the uh the the.
A liner?
No, it's not a liner. Um like you said, it's easier on that side. Papers too thick. Might be your fifth copy if you uh if you wanna take a look.
Look, I'm just gonna add that our chairman will probably have input on that.
It it's it's a fiberglass, it's not, it's not a line, it is a, here, preformed uh fiberglass.
Okay, no, the reason, the reason he's saying that is that whenever we get an application for a gun eye pool, I always recommend or require a survey for the location of the pool before the gun eye is shot because once it's in there, if you're, and if it's wrong, you're, you're in big trouble.
Mister DePaul has already asked me uh that he would want a a pre-dig, an an.
I was gonna say, before you put that fiberglass in place, uh you should stake it out and be sure because you can't move those either.
Correct, yes, sir.
You'll end up breaking it all into pieces.
We're gonna do a survey.
No, we don't want you to have to come back and beg for another little variance, you know how that works.
Correct.
So I appreciate.
How do you, it'll probably get smaller then.
I appreciate your understanding and makes it, and we're gonna get that done properly.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh and we would suggest six months to start and a year to finish?
Yes.
And Mister DePaul, what um do we need, I know we need the survey.
A final survey at the end, sir.
A final survey at the end.
Absolutely, okay.
I'll second that.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazans.
Hi.
You have your variants, good luck.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Albersen.
Hello, I'm uh Jim Coleman, I'm the architect. And the owners, Laura and Reeve are here as well. Here for really a uh variance request is more technical. It's a house uh that we can date the existing attic to the nineteen twenties. There's existing uh bathroom and bedroom. And you have to access the existing bedroom and bathroom uh through the existing attic, which is not attractive and was never finished. It has laugh on the walls, but it was never plastered. And so we're here for a variance to be able to continue to use the um third floor of the house. And there's really no impact on the building or the neighborhood. This is the view of the the house, at the back of the house. Where the new window will be to meet the building code, egress requirements, is screened by a large tree. And I do have plans and happy to answer any any questions.
So how long has the third floor been used?
Well, since the house was built, it looks like there's the fixtures we can date to the nineteen twenties and the drywall. And the, the attic is divided into a third, so the bedroom and bathroom are at the back. There's a finished stair that comes up to the attic floor. That's a painted floor, um so it all looks like it's there from uh early nineteen twenties.
Okay, so our building inspector is gonna check me on this. I'm assuming that it's the existing, it's legally existing nonconforming, a third floor use?
That is correct, sir, the section that was.
The section that was there is, that is the older section, is legally existing nonconforming.
We verify by inspection, yes.
And we don't have to worry about.
That is correct.
Okay, that that's, that's good. What about um anything to do with uh uh sprinklers or fire egress or anything like that that we should be aware of?
Well, yes, so we will, uh we're amending the building permit to include sprinkler protection and an egress window uh at the back behind that tree.
Okay. Sounds right. Any comments from the board?
Nope.
Anybody? Anybody in the audience or online that would like to address this application?
No hands raised online.
No hands raised online. No questions are answered, we'll move, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazans.
Hi.
We need a motion.
Okay, um this is um, I'd make a motion on the application of uh Laura and Reeve Albersen, sixty-nine Crest Road. This is um, an application for um, it's an application with respect to uh finishing the balance in the third story of a legally nonconforming dwelling, like uh sixty-nine Crest Road. The um, the third story, I think I saw on the record, pre- is uh the town code, legally nonconforming.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I propose that um, that we grant the variance for the following reasons. First, uh the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. In fact, you're gonna get the use of that uh third floor and it's, the character looks like from what was presented, uh the character of the house will remain unchanged. Can the benefit uh sought be achieved by some other method? It does not appear that if you wanna have use of that attic, you're gonna have to have a variance to do that. Is the requested variance substantial? It's not at all, uh you're just uh, I don't, it's already there, it's just a question of making use of the space. Uh will there be an adverse effect on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood? No, it looks like um, there's uh, looks like the egress uh from that area, it looks like it's placed behind a tree. And you will not be able to see it at all and uh doesn't look like there's much of a change at all. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? I'm not on the fence about that, I mean, it is to the extent that you wanna have use of of it, but the condition was the way that it was, so. Um but the bottom line is that the um, the the benefit to the applicant far outweighs any uh potential detriment to the community, so um. Uh what will we need, um, what will we need for the applicant?
We will get final certifications from this fire sprinkler engineer as to the validity of the system.
Okay. Let's see, six months to start and a year to finish?
It's fine.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenze.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazans.
Hi.
You have your variants, good luck.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, Whipple World Club.
Good evening. Uh, it's okay, right? Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Anthony Nester with the firm of J M C, representing the Whipple World Club in their application for an amended special use permit. I'm here tonight with Mister Brian Schmidt, who is the club general manager, and Miss Jennifer Fernandez, who is with Aqua Tectonics, who are the pool designers. Should you have any questions with regards to the club operations or pool design? So, we are here tonight to begin the process of amending the, an existing special permit for the property. To request for front yard setback variances, which um are required for replacement of existing swimming and reading pool, to construct a new equipment shed, um and also to legalize some existing pool patios that was installed without a permit. And finally, to request, uh I believe as part of the process, a referral to both the planning board and the architectural review board as part of the special permit process. The Whipple World Club is approximately, it's just a little over a hundred and eighty acres with about seventy-two acres in the town of Newcastle and the remaining a hundred and eight acres in the town of North Castle. And previously, we've received eleven Z B A approvals, whether they were amending existing permits throughout the years. Um and actually, there was, the last one was for installation of the pool that's being replaced today. So there's been seriously, series of special use permits and variances since nineteen seventy-five, as far as I could tell through a lot of the people. So what I did here is, uh as you can see on the screen, so the area that we're really speaking about or here tonight about for the amended permit is the existing pool area. So um right now, you can see the pool is in the aqua here. Whipple World Road is actually the road that bisects vertically between the pool on the right and then actually the golf course is continued on the other side of the road. So in this area, there's no existing abutting residential neighbors in this area. And to the right of the pool is the existing pool clubhouse. To the south, planned south of the pool are existing tennis courts. And to the north is the main clubhouse and the main parking area for pools, for the pool and the rest of the club. Well, and one of the the main reasons why we're here tonight is we've been, I believe it's since the last year, year and a half, we've been working with Westchester County uh Health Department of Health on bringing the existing pool up to current health department standards. It's an old pool, it's been there for sixty-plus years. Uh so the club has been working with the pool, uh with the health department to try to maintain it being open through the summer years. And working with them to try to upgrade as much as can be done with regards to the health and safety of the patrons or the people that use the pool. So I believe it was last year, there were some um renovations done to the existing pool because they wanted to open it up in Memorial Day last year. And we worked pretty diligently with the health department on doing a lot of upgrades uh and uh code compliant um upgrades to the pool and its surrounding area. Uh and so that's, this way the club would be able to open the pool for Memorial Day in twenty twenty-four. Um and actually, this summer of twenty twenty-five. Which is one of the reasons why, and it was, wasn't done maliciously or under any other pretenses besides trying to satisfy the health department um by adding new uh paver area to the pool on the right. By adding new uh paver area to the pool on the right hand side, as you can see right here in red. This area was grass before this, which was the the space between the clubhouse and the pool. So making it, you know, user-friendly, people going from the grass back and forth, dealing with drainage was very difficult. So it wasn't intentionally that we ignored filing for a permit. Uh I think it was just a rush of trying to comply with the health department in order to um have the pool available for Memorial Day. So this area that you see, which is approximately thirty-four hundred square feet, was area that was previously grassed, that was paved with patio for the pool last summer. So that that was this is something that we're we're seeking for legalization of this section that was done without a permit. So currently, what you see on your screen here now is the existing conditions, a rendering of existing conditions. So you can see that the there's the two pools, the waiting pool is the small rectangle above. And I'll call it the Z-shaped pool below is the main pool that's below. And I believe it was in two thousand and fifteen, um where there was a variance. I had an amended special permit for the waiting pool, which is the small rectangle on top. And the the existing pool um was located in in its location. So all three of these, there was existing variances that were granted in the past with regards to these um pools. Um and actually, one thing I wanted to mention is down below here, I don't know if you can see my my hand. This little area down here is where the existing pool equipment shed is located. So the variances that were previously granted was there was a fifty-foot, well, I'll back up a little bit, I'm sorry. So since um this property is located in a residential zone and it's a special permit process. The front yard setbacks within and applied to this property in this process is double the existing setbacks of the zone. So there's a seventy-five foot front yard setback in the R, I believe it's the R two zone, Tom, if I'm not mistaken. Um which requires a hundred fifty-foot setback from anything with regards to the front yard setback. So um under existing conditions, there's these things do exist here. But so right now, the the waiting pool, which is the one on top, is a fifty-foot off the front yard setback. The main pool, the closest point to that is thirty-five feet. And the pool equipment shed um down on the south side of the sheet, um the plan is forty-five feet away. So the 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 plan moving forward is not to move the pool. We just need to replace the pool pretty much in its current location. So as you can see on the screen here, and I'll see if I can zoom in a little bit here more, is. Uh I I've dashed and read the locations of the existing pools. And as you can see, the new pool is almost identically in the same spot as the existing main pool. And what we're doing is we're combining the waiting pool slash kiddie pool with the main pool. By providing a zero-point entry in that north portion of the the pool. So basically, we're combining both the pools in this new pool. And in doing so, um it extends the long length of the the pool that parallels Whipple Road. And right at the point where it's closest to it requires us to seek a new variance um from what was existing, you know, provided before. So as an example, um the the main pool where we're asking for is an additional. Three feet for the main pool, because before there was a thirty-foot variant. So extending this lineup actually um required us to to ask for an additional three feet just based on the way the property line comes into the property. And the pool equipment shed is also being removed and constructed basically in the same location. But with all the new um equipment that needs to be provided, you know, the new codes and things like that, it just needed to be a little bit bigger. It's not much bigger. But also that that is it required us to be two feet closer. So instead of being forty-five feet, we're forty-three feet. And then a- actually, it's based on the denial letter, there was also um two other variances that we needed. One was um even though on the aqua on the left side of the pool, there was an existing patio. As you can see here, there's an existing patio. And and that distance is not changing. It's just being replaced in kind, but it's still staying the same. So but when you um extend it straight up, it's it's still required and it's twenty-five feet from the property line. So we're required to provide ask for variance for that twenty-five feet. And then this this section that's a light gray here from the the dark gray is the additional. The pavers that were installed without a permit. And that distance is still within a hundred and fifty feet and that's seventy-five feet from the property line. And then I just wanted to also just go through some of the special permit conditions and standards. So the first one is the proposed use will serve a a community need. Uh and we believe it it does because the new pool keeps, you know, the pool up to current codes and safer for all the users. And it's gonna be brought up to current Westchester County Health Department standards. The location and size is in harmony with the district. Like I said, we're not, oh, excuse me, if you look at the the area here, we're not really. We are increasing the area, but it's still generally in the same spot. And if you combine them both, uh we don't feel that it's it is um. Out of character for the area. The project won't hinder adjacent developments. As you can see, there is there isn't any adjacent developments in this particular area besides the facilities of the club. Um you can see here, th- this yellow line represents Whipple Road. That to the left here is still part of the golf course. Pool operation hours, the pool is only operated during the day. So there's no proposed lighting. There's no existing lighting out there now. There's only lighting uh within the pool clubhouse building itself underneath whatever required lighting that's on the egress doors and underneath the canopy. But there are no proposed lights what's, you know, at all with regards to um out by the pool area. So those hours of operation is gonna be limited to during the day. And that's not gonna change. That's the way it currently operates today. And parking areas aren't impacted. We're not, this plan doesn't necessarily add a significant amount of area that would draw more, in our opinion, draw more users to the pool. So the existing parking that's provided, which as you can look here to the north, is the main parking lot for the club. And there's also a parking lot to the right here side um for users of the pool. So parking, we don't believe would be impacted whatsoever. So, excuse me. And I do have copies of the site plan in case anybody had some questions. Um but we have we have been given staff memorandums. So we do have a memorandum from the planner, from the town engineer, and also from the environmental coordinator. Which we've been working on addressing all their comments. And um again, I'd just like to, you know, respectfully request that we be referred to the planning board and the ARB. Because this project, um in accordance with the health department, they're under the assumption that they're allowing us to have the pool open this year, this summer. But they expect at the close of the season that the a new pool is gonna commence right after the closure of of the season. So we were trying to um get everything in place so that we can start doing demolition and all the work involved in replacing the pool. After the pool is closed, you know, end of September, October on, and have a new pool open and operating by summer of twenty twenty-six. Okay, if you if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No, one one of my questions was gonna be, did you get the memorandums? And you already answered that question.
We have, and and.
You're gonna have to work on that a bit.
Yes, um I I think there, like I said, we've got them. We got the town engineer's comments yesterday and the environmental coordinator, I think, the end of last week. So we have majority of them already addressed. Um and I know um one concern might be for referring us to the planning board and ARB is we would have all those comments addressed. Prior to making the submissions in order to get on those particular boards. So I that's our goal, is to have the application updated and address their comments. So that when the planning board and ARB review it, they're reviewing it with the comments addressed from staff.
Okay, actually, your presentation for this for tonight, I'm going to make a motion that we review this applicant to the planning board and to the ARB. Hopefully, you'll be ready as soon as possible because uh September comes very quickly.
Yes.
Okay. On our end, we are, we we can't really go much farther than that until we get out of the planning and the uh ARB.
We understand.
So unless there's anybody in this audience or online that wants to address this application. Nobody, nobody, nobody. Okay, I'm I'm gonna make a motion that we post uh adjourn your application in front of our board. Until such time as you have completed your planning board and architectural board presentations and may have given their given you their input.
Second that motion.
Somebody wants? Oh, Sabrina, you have something you wanna put into uh our document?
Um I actually just wanted to mention that your board um needs to be lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And there's currently not enough information to determine whether or not this is a type-two action or an unlisted action. So it would be um, I think it would be difficult for the planning board or the ARB to make any determinations. Until we figure out if the if there is a secret action that needs to occur.
I I was I was worried about that, if we had to go into that and or since we're replacing an existing pool in its almost exact location, if that was going to trigger.
Yeah, but it it unfortunately, it talks about the amount of disturbance that will occur. And if it is uh over four thousand square feet of disturbance, it doesn't mean that because it was there, it doesn't need an an environmental review. And so what my comment was, and and maybe the applicant has this information tonight, is there was no measurements on the site plan. Or there was no calculation of disturbance, so I couldn't make that determination for the board and get that moving now if it needed to be done.
If I may?
Sure.
Um um Sabrina, the plan definitely exceeds four thousand square feet of disturbance. So I have to be correct. So we will.
Yeah, so so with that, it would be, it doesn't qualify as a type-two action, which means there's no further environmental review. So if that is the if that is the case, then I would, if you wanna expedite this, then I would say um that the board could um. Issue its intent to be lead agency tonight. Pending the applicant submission of a revised environment, full environmental assessment form with more detail and the information. I can put together the notice with the interested involved, the agency list, which will include the planning board and the architectural review board. They will get that notice of intent. Um it'll circulate for thirty days and then you guys can become lead agency, but that will save some time um as we proceed.
Okay, so let's try and get this done as expeditiously as possible. So uh I I'll speak for the board and if somebody has any regrets or any comment about it, that we will intend to be lead agency and we'll put that out there.
All right, so then just what I would I would request that you do tonight is and make a motion to declare yourself lead agency. And circulate the notice of intent pending the applicant submission of a revised full environmental assessment form. Um and a link to detailed mapping information so we can circulate the notice of intent.
You said that so well, I'm not gonna repeat it. So moved.
I think Jack got it.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I I I'll second that motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzick.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazan.
Hi.
Anything else, Sabrina?
Um no, I think that if if you're going to refer it, um you know, for uh under the code, as long as the uh receiving boards get full information. I don't see any problems with their review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. We'll get that revised, yeah, yeah.
We're we're going to re we're going to refer you to the plan and to the architectural. We'll get we'll get going on the lead agency business. Try to keep you try to keep you moving.
And then Sabrina, we actually have the EAF revised per your comments. Uh so we'll provide the additional plan links, you know, the links to plans and back up some of the disturbance areas and we'll get that to you.
Okay, and the and the applicant number of copies as well.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
I'll see you when you're ready. Come back.
Thank you.
Hopefully soon.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, next up is the library field project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Keith Potenski. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Which is the New York Metropolitan Reference and Research Library Agency. The applicant is a contract bended with respect to the property. And tonight I have here with me the executive director Nate Hill, as well as the project architect Peter Gregory. Tonight, we're looking to introduce the board to the application, since it's the first time that you're seeing this. A- ask that you declare your intent to act as lead agency under SECR and undergo a coordinated review with the planning board. And if the board sees fit, schedule a site visit to see the property. The applicant wishes to construct an approximately two thousand five hundred square foot library on the property. Uh with an accessory garage and associated gravel parking area. Uh this is an oversized approximately twenty-seven acre property in the two A zoning district. And the applicant proposes to leave nine approximately ninety-five percent of the property uh in its natural state. With that said, I'd like to introduce Nate Hill, uh the executive director, to talk a little bit about who his organization is and what the library field project seeks to do.
Thanks, Keith. And thanks for having me. Hi there, I'm Nate Hill. I am the executive director of the Metropolitan New York Library Council. Also known as Metro for short. It's easier to say. It's one of New York State's nine regional library councils chartered by the New York State Board of Regents and established in education law in nineteen sixty-six. We serve the boroughs of New York City as well as Westchester County, though many of our services have impact far beyond our local service area. Our mission is to create a sustainable culture of creativity, collaboration, and open exchange for libraries, archives, museums, and cultural institutions in the metropolitan New York region and around the world. We achieve this through resource sharing and collaborations across our network that allow libraries to experiment, innovate, and develop new service models to better serve their patrons and users. The library field is a new project that Metro is developing in collaboration with the Westchester Library System and the Austin Public Library. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, Metro took part in a nationwide initiative studying the implications of moving library programs and services outside of buildings. Cultural institutions all over the country refocused their efforts on safe outdoor programming through environmental education, story walks, community gardening, nature connectedness work, citizen science projects, and more. Based on what we learned during that difficult time, Metro plans to open a permanent outdoor facility that will serve our region and become a prototype for a new service model for libraries, their partners, and their communities. With activities situated somewhere between those of a park, a preserve, a museum, and a library, the library field will be a shared environment that will deepen the community's understanding of the natural world and the way that we study it. Find inspiration in it and are responsible for its preservation. Two forty-nine Croton Dam Road is an ideal undeveloped outdoor location that our network of libraries, archives, museums, and other organizations can use as a shared programming space. Our application includes plans to build a two-bay maintenance garage and a twenty-five hundred square foot library building. With special attention and respect paid to the impact on the environment and the history of the. with special attention and respect paid to the impact on the environment and the history of the site. This library will accommodate our staff and offer a specially especially themed circulating library book selection, exhibition space, an indoor gathering space, and a programming area. We will integrate the library into Westchester Library System's online library catalog in cooperation with the Austin Public Library and offer access to tools and other non-traditional library materials as well. Our intention is to develop the site at two forty nine Croton Dam Road as minimally as possible. At no point in time in any phase of development, we wish to have more than thirty five visitors present at the site, roughly the equivalent of one visitor per acre of the total site size. The library field site will be open from dawn to dusk and we plan to open the library building with one to three staff members during traditional business hours, three to five days a week, while remaining closed during holidays. At most, we might expect one to two scheduled programs per day when we are open. We anticipate activity will be busier during the warm seasons. While many libraries measure success through attendance and the number of books circulated, the library field is intentionally designed as an experiential library rather than a transactional library. One analogy might be the manner in which a national park limits the number of backcountry permits that they offer at any given time in order to manage the experience for all of the participants. So thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal to all of you. Um I believe we're developing an important new community service for the town of Newcastle and our entire region. Um while many things about the library field are unique, it is not without precedent. Uh we draw inspirations from projects like the library farm up in Cicero, New York, the nature library that is currently under construction in the Denver, Colorado suburbs, and the sustainability library work in Arhus, Denmark. All of these projects have demonstrated unique learning opportunities and positive community outcomes and is exciting to draw Newcastle into this innovative network of services. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Nate. Um a- as I mentioned earlier, the project requires a special use permit from this board. Uh we also need several approvals from the planning board, including wetlands permit, steep slopes permit, um and a tree removal permit. Um fro- from this board, we'd also request an interpretation that either no area variance is required for for two eighty A of the town law. Um because as um our project engineer will explain, our property does abut um Croton Dam Road or in the alternative in area variance um from two eighty A. Um we were able to successfully move the garage outside of the front yard setback, so in the building inspector's initial denial, um it it said that a front yard variance was required. The reason why our our application doesn't ask for that is because we were successful in being able to move the garage outside of uh that front yard uh setbacks such that we believe no area variance is is necessary for the garage and all the other structures we believe are conforming. Um and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Peter Gregory so that he can explain uh the site plan and walk you through it, show where the access is and where the structures are on the property.
Um my name is Peter Gregory with DTS Providence Design Engineering. I'm the project engineer uh for this application. And uh we've prepared a um colored rendering um overlay on the on an aerial map outlining the twenty seven acre parcel uh that's being discussed. Uh there's access and frontage to the property on Croton Dam Road, which is located at the bottom of the screen and through which is a fifty foot right of way that extends from Croton Dam Road on our property up to two forty nine Croton Dam Road, which is the Castle property. Uh for the most part, the property is undeveloped with the exception of that driveway as well as a trail system that runs uh uh through the site that had been created, I guess, years ago as part of the overall uh estate. Um there is frontage, a portion of the property does front on Alapartis and our access on Croton Dam Road is about twelve hundred feet south of that uh intersection with Alapartis. Castle property to the north. There is a town park, I believe Sunny Ridge Preserve is to the west and south of the site. And along Croton Dam Road, we are to the rear of or behind uh four, three or four residential uh parcels that front on Croton Dam Road. You can see in the center of the property is where we're proposing the construction of the library building, the maintenance garage, and the parking area. Uh we're able to maintain approximately a three hundred and seventy seven foot uh distance away from that northern property line. We're over six hundred and forty five feet from the rear property line and we're five hundred feet uh from the um uh property line, which is the abuts the residential uh properties along Croton Dam Road. Um if you can go to the this the next slide. So the property is constrained with uh wetlands and steep slopes. This uh rendering is indicating where are ponds, there are two ponds on the property uh and its associated wetland and the yellow, light yellow bubbled area around it is our uh one hundred foot fifty foot, one hundred and fifty foot regulated uh buffer areas. Uh you can see that also with the darker shading amongst that are designated steep slopes. Uh the property is moderately to steeply sloped in certain areas. There's a lot of ledge, uh rock that's exposed. Uh but um the library is was very sensitive to the environmental uh constraints on the site and in that portion where we've selected to to install the constructed parking area, the garage, and the uh library is an area for the most part that is located outside of that regulated area as well as minimal, you know, minimizing any impacts to the steep sloped uh areas that are up there. We are proposing to bring utilities into the site. We are looking to bring in our overhead power uh from Croton Dam Road up along the driveway uh to the building site. We have had uh conversations and discussions with the Westchester County Health Department regarding a uh installing a septic system on the site, water supply. And um even we've even discussed it with New York City D E P. A portion of the property is within the watershed, uh but the majority of the property where the improvements are proposed and our septic are proposed are not in the watershed. Uh that will be diverted into a different, you know, different location or direction. We are looking also uh to widen the existing driveway to accommodate emergency vehicles. Uh currently, I think the driveway is twelve to fourteen feet in width. We will be looking to widen that to twenty foot to allow for emergency vehicles to maintain the access up to the castle property. Uh the access, the easement through the site is for the benefit of the castle to have uh access to that site as well. We are looking to capture and treat any stormwater runoff being generated from the building and the parking area. We will capture that. We will divert that and route it through a small uh stormwater mitigation practice up on the site and there shouldn't be any impact to any of the wetlands or adjacent properties. Uh as part of this, there will be disturbance to our steep slopes. Uh there will be uh disturbance within the buffer. Uh we are working with Paul Janik, who I believe is with us tonight online. Um and we will have um, we are proposing buffer mitigation enhanced some of the areas that are located on that wetland corridor and around uh some of the ponds that are on the site. Uh I think we've, you know, been able to maintain a reasonable distance to the surrounding properties. I don't think there'll be a significant impact to them. Uh it should be very uh uh reasonable in terms of preserving a lot of the natural buffer that's there and have minimal impact, you know, on the to the surrounding uh properties. We have reached out to New York State D E C for any type of jurisdictional determination. We're waiting to hear back on that. And we are prepared to move forward to, you know, in discussing this with the planning board and discuss the uh wetland and other environmental issues with them. Oh, there's one, that last one we should talk about. So Nate, if you wanna discuss it, but what we were able to do is to overlay the trail map from Sunny Preserve being adjacent to our site. And the idea is that some of those trails that are on the town's property actually almost connect to some of the trails that are on this site. So the idea would be to maintain uh those trails um and allow to flow, you know, people to flow back and forth through the site as part of this use as well as what's existing on the adjacent um uh parkland. We're not looking to create any trails. They're already there and they would just have access to go back and forth between the two.
Thank you Pete. Thank you. So uh a- as Pete pointed out, this is really an incredible opportunity for the town to um uh allow this property to open to the public and connect up with the town's existing park um on the adjacent property. Um so we're excited about the property and uh and the project. As I mentioned in my memorandum in support, uh the applicant meets all the requirements uh for the special use permit. In the interest of time, I'm not gonna go through each of them individually at this moment, um but I would encourage all of you to read our memo in support um uh before the next meeting. Suffice it to say that um I if you read the special permit criteria, what it's really seeking to do, um I'm paraphrasing very roughly is is um uh allow a use that's gonna benefit the community without uh 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 having a a negative impact on the community. In this case, we've explained why the property is gonna be available to the public so the neighbors can come use the trail system from dawn to dusk, walk their dogs, and then during um uh business hours, uh access the library building itself. Um and the reason why uh it's not going to have a negative impact on the neighbors is because we're using an existing driveway that's connecting up with the public road. Um and the uh improvements have been strategically located in the central portion of this twenty seven acre property such that it's separated from the neighbors by significant topography and distance and mature vegetation. Um so it's really uh an ideal um use uh for this particular site. That said, we thank the board for its time and consideration. Uh we're happy to try to respond to any questions or comments that you might have. We did receive a copy of the town planner's memo, uh which we're in the process of addressing and of course, we have to go to the planning board um and address any comments that they have. Um so we thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
You're going to the planning board after this.
Correct.
We're gonna refer you to the planning board. For the building itself, we we should refer to the architectural board as well?
Yes, sir.
So it's similar to what we just did.
I I think there's a pre step that needs to occur, Mr. Chairman. Um I don't mean to interrupt, but um in reviewing this application, there seems to be um a lack of a subdivision map that separates this cor- this twenty seven acres from the original estate. Um it was it was done, I am assuming through a deed uh with a filing at Westchester County Clerk's Office, but there is not a file map that has been signed uh by the town of Newcastle. So I think that before the zoning board can entertain a request for a special use permit on the property, we need to make sure that the property is actually subdivided properly.
Yeah, thank you. We're we're happy to address that. So so there is a minor inconsistency between the lot that's shown on the deed a- as shown on our survey and the um subdivision plat that was filed in nineteen sixty nine. It relates to a portion of the property that's really irrelevant to this application. It's the property, there's a thin part of the property that extends over to Alapartis and there's a minor discrepancy there, which we're happy to clean up with the planning board as part of a resubdivision. The planning board does have the right under the code to even waive that and and not require that, but but we are prepared to address that with the planning board.
Yeah, that would be my question about the plan. You you need to get the planning board involved with this.
Yes.
They handle the subdivisions and make sure that everything is on track for that.
Correct.
Before you come back to us.
Absolutely.
So for tonight, Sabrina, we're gonna do the same thing we just did. We're gonna declare ourselves lead agency?
I don't think you should. I don't think you should.
Why not?
I I think you should. I I think that the applicant needs to demonstrate that this lot exists and 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 that it is done according to the mechanisms that the town requires before you declare your lead agency.
So respectfully, we submitted a survey which demonstrates that the lot does exist. The the applicant is a contract vendee. The seller's been paying taxes on this lot for many years. If the lot doesn't exist, then why is why is the seller paying taxes? Obviously, the lot does exist, it's just a minor discrepancy on one of the lot lines, which we're gonna clean up with the planning.
Let's let's get the discrepancy cleaned up.
Yeah.
And then we'll 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 go on from there. I you know, I like to I like to move it along. I don't like to see things just linger and and.
Thank you. We we appreciate that.
Go on and on and on. I like to move along. We gotta move it along correctly.
Uh understood, and it's the planning board that has jurisdiction over the subdivision, so we can't get before the planning board to start the secret process without this board. Um we're we're told that this board's gonna be acting as the lead agency.
Right.
As I mentioned before, the applicant is the contract vendee under a contract that has a limited diligence period after which time the applicant has to either close or cancel the contract. So time is of the essence here. We can't afford to lose another month and I understand the boards don't meet August. So it's really critical that we get that lead agency notice circulated. There's no downside to doing that towards not making any substantive determination. We're just starting the process and going to the planning board so that we can address that minor subdivision discrepancy. And again, it affects a portion of the property that's totally irrelevant to this application. And we could show you on the subdivision plat tonight, on the survey tonight, where that discrepancy is to satisfy any concerns that you might have. Suffice it to say, it's not relevant to the uh improvements that are being imposed or the use.
Yeah, I I I um I have to, Sabrina, we we you know, we we can defer this back to the planning board for the limited purpose of finalizing the um the uh the lot lines on the plat so that um so that we we can entertain the the remaining uh portions of the application uh the next time around.
What what's the downside of declaring intent to act as lead agency and starting the secret process? There's a thirty day waiting period there. So basically, by not doing that today, you're 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 gonna, we're gonna lose a month on the front end and then we're gonna lose another month on the back end because this board's not gonna be able to take action. Let's at least declare intent and allow for objections. You're not making any substantive determination. There's no uh secret determination being made. All we're doing is starting the process. There's no downside to doing that.
I don't want to let the board have the ability to declare, I'm sorry.
I say, I I understand the whole views. But I think we need to defer to our council as to what's the proper.
I'm just gonna note my objection for the for the record. There's absolutely no reason not to start the secret process. An application has been filed both with the zoning board appeals and the planning board and we included a copy of the survey demonstrating that this is in fact a valid tax lot but for a minor discrepancy between the nineteen sixty nine subdivision, which was filed with with the county clerk's office and the tax map on file with the county. And and the tax map on file with the town matches our deed. So the town's own tax department agrees with the legal description in our deed. So what we're really talking about is a a paper discrepancy and it's not a a good enough reason in my mind to delay the process by an entire month or what what will end up being two months. It'll be a month on the front end and a month on the back end, which could really.
You're right. Anywhere we can move this along quicker, what could be done here?
And the only thing I can think of, and it would still involve moving this to the next meeting, is that is because we really have a response that we could consider between Sabrina's memo and tonight in terms of the uh response to the objections to the subdivision map. So uh the only thing I can think of is that we could have communication between now and the next uh and the next meeting sooner rather than later to determine if this is something that we can uh entertain without reference back to the planning board. Other than that, I can't think of anything.
You you know, another another option is that this goes over to the planning board and the planning board, when they're doing the subdivision, they also do this the all the environmental permits at the same time, right? Um you know, they are the they you would refer it to the planning board for the environmental, the steep slopes and the wetland permits. Um the the planning board could do a subdivision site plan, steep slope and wetland permit all in one process and they can come back to you for the special use permit.
And the planning board would act as lead agency. So is that what you're suggesting?
I would assume so since they would be doing the, you know, all of those permits.
That would be fine. If we're gonna do that though, then I'd like this board to waive any objection to the planning board acting as lead agency tonight so we don't lose a whole month with the planning board, because the planning board meets on June third.
Okay.
Well, the the planning board will not be addressing this on June third.
Well, regardless, we'll 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 have to discuss that offline because the applicant submitted its application well in advance of the deadline. But um but that's neither here nor there.
Well, since since this board is the controlling uh board for special use permits, um I I have a problem with um relinquishing our right uh to secret to be lead agency uh because that that's not going to, that doesn't sit right with me. I I would I would suggest, if it's possible and if the board agrees. if you can get those minor quote-unquote discrepancies resolved for, with, for the town's satisfaction, I would suggest that we would be willing to have a special meeting before our next meeting. If you could do that, just only to memorialize your bare discrepancies in declaring ourselves lead agency.
I appreciate that.
That would save you some time.
It seems unnecessary to me to hold a special meeting for the sole purpose of doing something that the board could simply do tonight, but if the board's offering that, I'm not going to turn on down.
I understand what you're saying, but I can't in good faith and conscience do something that our legal counsel feels may be a problem.
I appreciate that.
And that's going to help you too, because I don't want anything to hurt you guys going forward. If the board is agreeable to a special meeting.
Yep.
You do your job as quickly as possible. Let us, I'll let my secretary know when you have everything accomplished and is agreed to by the town officials, and we will schedule ASAP a special meeting just to come in here and say, okay, you ready or okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that. And to save time, does the board know that it definitely wants to do a site visit? Because perhaps that's something that we can get started on so that we don't lose another month to the site visit as well.
As for me, I don't require a site visit. If anybody on the board wants one, we will defer to that.
Thank you.
No site visit necessary.
Thank you.
Obviously, with reserving the, reserving the right to require a site visit should, under circumstances.
As we come along and circumstances change, if we have to come and take a look, we're not giving up that right.
Of course, so we would encourage all of the board members to come see this beautiful property. Again, it really is an ideal use for the town. We're under some serious time constraints because we don't own the property yet, so we have a limited period of time, hence our push to get this done as quickly as possible. We do appreciate the board's willingness to work with us and hold a special meeting to keep the process moving, so thank you for that.
We would like to help you as much as possible, because it sounds like a great project.
Thank you.
But I don't want anything down the line to come back and create a problem for not only us, but you too.
Of course.
So let's do it, let's do it the right way.
Of course.
Again, get your act together, get your paperwork done as soon as possible.
Of course.
Let us know when you're ready. We will schedule a meeting as quickly as possible after that and get you back on track.
Also, what I'd offer is if council for the seller wants to get a conference call with us to, you know, to confirm that, you know, there's no delay in the due diligence process and so forth. I don't know what the terms of the due diligence clause are, but I'd be happy to talk to council, yourself and council for the seller, you know, just to sort of allay any of those concerns.
Thank you, I appreciate that, much appreciated, yeah. And if any member of the public wants to chime in between now and the next time we appear, you know, we're, again, this project really is designed to benefit the community, and we're looking for feedback from the neighbors to find out. I think some of the neighbors have dogs, for example, and they want to walk their dogs on the property. We're excited to make the property available to their use, so we look forward to hearing from them as well.
We're not going to open comments to the public tonight, but we will more than welcome any written comments that want to be submitted to us between now and our next meeting. And hopefully, if you get everything together by our next meeting, we can talk, have anybody that wants to put their input in as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, last meeting is bowing sign.
Good evening.
What a record I have to use from this case.
As well, Anasawi AWJ, we are the construction management for the owner of Fifty-Six Shingle. I think with me, couldn't be here today, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions. We were in front of the board last year for two eighty to get access to the property. We were granted that, and my understanding there was no condition or location of the house for the grant of the two eighty access. We went back to the planning board, to the building department, and they would require additional.
Which require.
Water main service tend to be close approximately from the hydrant existing or create a new hydrant. We sat with the engineer, we come up with a new design that will be able to accommodate all the requirement from the building department, and in the meantime, not adding any hardship on the owner of the property. So that's basically, we had the house in one location, and we just moved it closer to maintain the code requirement of the hydrant that existing already.
So, if I may.
Yeah, please.
You know, if I could just leave the rest of the presentation. So we're back here on re-application because the plans have changed, correct?
The location of the house.
Location, can you just describe the change in the plans?
So I would say this is the original design. The original design was the house location as pretty much in that location. This is Shingle Row. Due to the code requirement that we got from the building department that we had to be within the six hundred feet of existing hydrant. So it's either we create a new water main line, which is going to get, you know, cost a hundred, hundreds of thousand dollar to, and create a hydrant closer to the house, which is that location. But we went back to the engineer trying to find a solution to minimize that additional cost within our right, within all our setbacks. We found a new location, which is approximately. So this was the existing, or the proposed previous, now the new proposed. So with this location, it's still, we're not asking for any variance. We're meeting all the requirement, all the setback. We're not changing any character of the existing property. It just make it closer to the existing hydrant and eliminate the need of adding huge eight-inch water main and add an additional hydrant. That's all.
Okay, so just ask our counsel. So Mike, our position here tonight is to, we, the house doesn't need a variance, the new location, there's no variance required.
Correct.
And then on the topic of two eighty A, are we making any determination on that this evening?
We are, I believe all we need to do is, yes, reconfirm the previous decision on granting the two eighty A variance in light of the change in plan. So basically, you know, what we're, what we need to do is reflect the fact that in the previous resolution, the grant of the two eighty A variance was based on plans submitted at the time. There have been revised plans submitted tonight, and then we just need to have, you know, a new vote on the two eighty A variance based on the revised plans.
Okay. And so I would think before we do anything like that, I think we'd probably want to see if there are anyone in the audience or online who has liked to make a comment in this case. I know we've received a couple of letters in this, Jackie, is that correct?
Hey, we're going live.
Okay. Where, Mr. Goldberg?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, what would you like to say in reference to this?
Well, I, as you just mentioned, you know, a couple of letters have been submitted. One of them is mine. I just wanted to make myself available in case any board officers had any questions about it.
Does anyone on the board have any questions on reference to the letter? No one has any questions in reference to your letter?
Thank you.
Okay. Yep, okay, his hand is down. Okay, so then, Mike, we'll make a motion then to revote on the two eighty A, section two eighty A, based upon the new location of the dwelling.
Right, on the same terms, on the same terms that were stated on the record on the previous application.
Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, looks like.
The only modification being the revised plans as described.
Okay, so.
Can I just add?
Yeah, sure.
Can we just start the period of the construction from today?
You want, yeah, you'd want your beginning of your six months to start to go today. I, does the board have any comment on that? Or, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have any problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we, for the record, to confirm that this section two eighty A, which was previously voted upon the board in the positive on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, just for the record, we will now vote again on the two eighty, two eighty A in order to confirm that this is in reference to the new location of the dwelling that would be built.
And all the, all of the remaining terms of the original resolution, you know, subject to all the remaining terms of the original resolution, with the only modification being the reference to the revised plans.
Okay, so then, again, as our counsel says, subject to the original resolution dated Wednesday, January twenty-ninth.
Our second motion.
Acting Chairman Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenze.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay. On the right of our business is the approval of the April twenty, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. I move that we approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenze.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan.
Aye.
Chairman is in order, I hope you adjourn. Good evening. This is the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Newcastle's only board of appeals. We'll get started, we have an extension tonight.
Uh, Jen.